Good evening and welcome to the Air Planning Board Open Session Meeting, July 26. Being 6:15 we'll open the meeting. And the first thing on the meeting agenda is to call to order what we're doing and then to approve the agenda under our general business category.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Seconded.
Any discussion on the agenda?
None.
Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote.
Yes.
Aight.
Aight.
Aight, okay.
We're really excited.
It's unanimous vote to approve.
It's July.
Unanimous vote to approve the agenda. Next item on our agenda is what we typically do at every meeting is ask if we have a planner, if we have any covenants or bond releases on the projects that are under construction.
Not today.
Okay, having none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. And just for clarification, I am serving as chairman tonight in the absence of Jonathan Krantz, and the next item on the agenda I have a conflict with, so I will be recusing myself out of the room. So the next item on the agenda, I'll read it, is a discussion with Air Solar 2B, Washington Street, and a report on the construction progress, field changes, and stormwater management. So that's right off the language of the agenda. So I will move on and Mr. Tilletson will take over this portion of the meeting.
Good evening. Do we have anybody here from the Air Solar 2B project?
Actually, yeah.
Would you like to come to the table and got the process with us?
I'll put some.
Good evening, Cal. Good evening, Robie. How are you?
I knew the answer when I asked the question.
I figured you might.
And, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to note that I put together a one-page memo this morning just trying to summarize what we looked at at the June 23 site visit and to make some recommendations on steps going forward. These are just discussion items right now, which is why the big word draft appears across the whole thing, but I thought this might keep us on track a little bit. So I just wrote this this morning, it's just to keep us...
There will be no tests on this for at least the first seven minutes, okay?
No problem. Okay, sounds good. Especially since I wasn't at the walk.
And believe it or not, I was not at the entire part of the walk, I had to leave it early also. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Archibald so he can kinda walk us through where we're gonna go.
Basically, I'll just read my memo, which I'm sure will elicit some discussion. So first of all, background, this memo I wrote this morning. On November 24, 2020, the Air Planning Board approved an amended site plan application for Air Solar 2B LLC for construction of a large-scale solar photovoltaic array off of Washington Street.
I did.
The planning board soon thereafter issued this notice of decision with general conditions and 10 special conditions. On June 23, 2022, the Air Planning Board and Air Conservation Commission conducted a site visit to the Air Solar 2B site to investigate how construction was proceeding. At that site visit, it was discovered that several fairly major field adjustments were made regarding the retaining wall supporting the access drive, the access drive itself, several stormwater management facilities, and other features. This list is not meant to be an exhaustive or especially descriptive except to illustrate that the project as constructed clearly deviates from the approved site plan. And two of the general conditions are most pertinent to the discussion, I won't read those, but basically it says that if there's a change, you know, we should be notified about it and get a record on it. So based on what we saw, and I think taking sort of a non-enforcement perspective, just trying to get the information and to revise the site plan, I think that there are some things that I certainly recommend that the planning board consider asking of the applicant. Number one being a revised site plan showing the features as constructed or to be constructed if they have not yet been constructed. Number two, a list of all specific field changes that deviate from the approved site plan and the reasons that such changes were made. So, you know, not just to say that we get rid of the tree box filters, or we enlarge the detention basin, but, you know, why those changes were made. And all that sort of leads into the need for a revised stormwater management reporting calculations, which I recommend be reviewed and approved by the Air DPW, as well as a revised long-term pollution prevention plan and stormwater system operation and maintenance plan, also to be reviewed by the DPW. So that's basically my thinking on this right now and...
Excuse me, Mark.
Yes.
And number five, anything else may not be...
That's...
Always a good way to land. No, other questions, so that's great.
Right, yeah. So, you know, I know the planning board has not met and discussed this since the site visit, and we did not deliberate at the site visit, so this is the first time that we have a chance to discuss what we saw and possible remedies to that.
Exactly. And if I may, also included in the package, I think, did you also give them a copy of the amended site plan approval that we did in 2020 for these gentlemen?
I think they must have.
Well, you probably have a copy. Just so you know, there were other pieces in here.
Okay.
One is a letter that we sent to Charlie Schultz in 2020, which is the approved one.
It's just a notice of decision.
It's a notice of decision that we sent to him. And then the covenant to secure the construction and maintenance of the infrastructure, there's a copy of it here also. And I'm more than welcome to have these also, but as Mark said, you probably have a copy.
All right, thanks.
I mean, I'll have to grab this one.
I have it memorized, don't worry, yes.
I'm sure, if you want a copy right now, I could give you my copy.
It'd be gracious, too, if we're gonna reference it.
There you go.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I don't remember what I wrote to you anyway, so...
Okay.
So anyway, go ahead, Mark, you have more?
Uh, no, that's what I have.
So, we wanna talk quickly about the site walk, yes?
Uh, yeah, I'd recommend, you know, that we start off with general impressions about this site visit, and then discuss what the planning board would like to do next to address the issue that there are obvious changes that were made.
Do you want us to address the changes and what led to them?
Um, yeah, so, in my head, in my brain, 'cause I don't have a list in front of me, the entrance, the entrance road.
Yep.
The, just to tick them off, and I'm sure you'll add more to it, Cal, 'cause you probably have a closer to it than I have. The entrance road, the retaining wall issue, the culvert wasn't ready to go, or the culvert's in process, and unfortunately, at that point, we started walking to the back of the property, to the back of the property where the solar panels were installed. There were some questions about the debris back there, and I had to leave at that point. So, it was trust somebody else to...
I wasn't there.
Yeah, so...
Nathan.
Nathan and Mark were there. So those are some of the issues that I think you wanna hear about, and by all means, other things may have happened, and you'd be happy to find out.
Right, so the contractor was working all since the beginning of the season doing this, and he's been staying in touch with us, but we didn't, you know, we're not means and methods, so we don't tell him how to do what he has to do on the site. He does the best job that he can when he's out there. Unfortunately, he hit a lot of ledge. There was a lot of near-surface ledge in the area where the drainage was gonna go, and the driveway coming down in, also the driveway heading back out to where the basin are. So that led to some wiggles in the driveway to avoid big knobs, the ledge, 'cause the last thing this neighborhood needed was us helping it blasting, especially if there was a good way to get around without having to do that. By moving the driveway over 20 feet, we could avoid a big knob ledge, so he's done that. But the biggest thing was the wall itself. We had designed this entrance to bring in large flatbed trucks loaded with panels, basically solar panels, to be able to drive to back of the site and unload these panels at the back of the site. And the construction schedule was such that they needed to get these things in the ground as quickly as possible. So they actually brought all those panels in before the wall was even constructed. They did a driveway entrance that they could live with, they brought all the construction equipment back there, they did all the work they needed to do back there, and now we're at the end of things, looking at the entrance, saying, okay, now we gotta build the wall. And the question came up, well, why are we gonna build this massive structure if, as it turns out, you guys didn't need it to do the construction? I don't know how they got the panels back there, if they ferried them back with other equipment, or smaller trucks, or if they brought them in on smaller trucks, I'm not quite sure, but one way or the other, they got it back there without the need to bring in big flatbed trucks. So then it became a question of, rather than put up a 16-foot wall that has a big sweeping entrance, that the only thing that's gonna be used in the future now will be for maintenance, pickup trucks once a month, or once every couple of months to get in there. It seemed entirely possible that they could, with some modifications, that they could redesign the driveway or improve from what they had, which they have done. We asked for more of a sweep than what they had, we asked them to stabilize the slope, bring it out at a two-to-one slope, I think. I'm not sure about that. Bring it out at a slope that was stable, that could be stabilized and has been stabilized. They put loam and a mixture of roots and loam that they had dug up without screening, they put it back down, which makes it tough to mow, but it makes it very stable when you place it and compact it in place. Like, it's got the roots and whatnot act, it's kinda reinforcing and it's holding it all in place, and it hasn't moved at all since it was put in there, even in the face of some fairly major rainstorms. And then they also, we asked them to place fabric on top, which is a jute mesh fabric that has seed in it that gets stapled down on the steepest portions of the slope. That has been done, that's in place now. So we're confident that that slope is in a good spot, and the driveway is plenty wide enough, I drove my pickup truck down there tonight. It's very accessible, it still needs a guardrail at the top, the guardrails at the top need to be tied into that. It still needs a gate that'll be partway down the driveway so that somebody can drive off the road, pull up to the gate, stop, get out, open the gate without being out on the road.
And that's the change, another change that we need.
Yeah.
We originally weren't planning to put a gate at the entrance, but because of the concerns of the DPW...
Because of the need to do that.
And the concerns of other people just turning in and getting hurt, we decided to put a gate in the front.
So then the other facet of that is now that you're coming out at a more acute angle, instead of swinging around, we've gotta have a sign there that prohibits a left-hand turn so when you come out, you can look up the hill, it's curving away from you, so you get a very good view up the hill of any traffic coming, it's a right turn only going out there. And that's been reviewed tentatively with the DPW, and they seem fine with those changes as long as we make that a right turn only.
And a left turn.
And a left turn in.
And did you... So part of the reason for the access road is also in case there's a problem back there, we have public safety back there.
Yep.
So you had the conversation with the fire department about that, too? Could you just touch on that, please?
Yeah, Kyle actually had that conversation. We talked to the chief, or to the officer, I'm not sure if it was the chief, and explained what we're doing and how we get in there. Their major concern is life safety, so getting an ambulance back there if they need to, and that should be perfectly accessible, shouldn't have any issue with that at all. 'Cause it is, as I said, I was able to drive my, he drove his car in there, I drove my truck in there, it's, you know, it's very accessible. I think the travel way is now probably 16 feet wide, 18 feet wide, something like that.
And then from the other feedback that I received from Kyle was that the only request from the fire department was to add a, again, a change, but add a turnaround at the, near the solar facility.
Just so they don't have to back all the way up.
So another area where they can back out and then turn around. So we added that to the site.
So they didn't request that for a fire truck, they requested for a small piece of equipment, like an ambulance?
Right.
Okay.
And basically, you know, anytime we've done these projects, discussions we've had with the fire department is if there's a fire in the equipment inside the enclosure, that's live electrical equipment, firemen are not going in there to deal with that, they're just gonna let it go, and they'll keep it from spreading anywhere else, and it'll be the owner's responsibility to fix it or do whatever they need to do with it. And I think that's...
So we missed the opportunity to put a sprinkler system in?
You're right.
Can we put a nice roof over with a sprinkler system?
Sure. So...
Yeah.
So the net result of this all is that there didn't seem to be a reason to build this monolithic 16-foot-high wall where we could deal with it with a slope, a stabilized earthen slope. So that's basically what's out there right now. And at that point, when it became clear to us as the engineers that, you know, they're starting to talk about getting as builds done, and they wanted us to come out and talk with them, and at that point, they were saying, you know, the contractor was saying, I don't see why you even need to build the wall. We got involved, and then when we kinda sorted through it, we called you and said, it's time for the planning board to come and take a look at this, 'cause we've got some changes that we think we need to discuss.
So if I may, it's outside of our, somewhat outside of our purview and not outside of our purview. When we did the site walk, the Conservation Commission was there also because they had concerns, too. And I guess this takes me to the point where we talk about the infiltration and cleaning of a little stormwater on the property, 'cause at that point, when we were there, the tree boxes weren't built yet, the piping was still kinda sitting, some was sitting on the ground, some was underground at this point. I don't recall exactly...
So the big four-foot...
The one that went on the road.
Hundred-foot long pipe is in the ground.
Yeah.
There's still a 20-foot section that needs to go in, that couldn't be extended because they hit ledge, so they've gotta work that in next to it with a connection. So that's yet to be done. The tree box filters have not been done yet, but they've started to excavate for those along the right side of the driveway.
And if I remember correctly, one of your engineers was gonna look at the stormwater work on that?
Yep.
And make sure that the stormwater, Cal, don't change dramatically?
Yeah, that's certainly gonna be part of it, and the nice, or the nice thing, I guess the advantage to doing it the way we're doing it, because the driveway was brought in at the elevation that they brought it in at, it's actually steeper than the 8% we had showed, 'cause again, 8% for big trucks. I think it's more in the range of 10% to 12%, which means that instead of going like this and having to pay all of that, it does this, and they're paving this, and then the flat section can go to gravel sooner, which means there's less stormwater infiltration needed to mitigate for the paved surface.
Yeah, less paved surface, less water falling out has to be mitigated, and so...
The intent is...
He's gonna rework the, he's gonna rework the dream.
So we've gotta rework it to show that it still works. The intent is still to put all the drainage in the ground.
Yeah.
But it should be that we've got more than sufficient storage for what's required because we've reduced the amount of pavement. Now gravel is still considered somewhat impervious, it's not like green space or anything, so it's gonna make a difference, it's not gonna make a huge difference.
What about the higher velocity of the stormwater as it comes off?
Well, as long as it gets off to the side into the controlled structures that we've got, it shouldn't develop that velocity. It's not like we're putting it in a curve and letting it go all the way to the bottom and then trying to collect it. We're trying to collect it, it steps down the driveway.
Currently, we have a, at a tree box right now, we have actually a, kind of like a slowing process down, it's not a speed bump, but kind of a ridge to capture the water as it speeds goes direct to the tree boxes, every, whatever, so many feet, so therefore, one is slow down and also direct.
And so one of the things I can't recall, not any, I didn't pull the plan, believe it or not, I didn't pull these plans out and start looking at them again from a couple years ago, but I don't, I have a feeling we talked about an O&M for there?
Yep.
And I would hope that if you've added stormberms and stuff like that, that are gonna be there on a regular basis, say, man, it's a stormwater, and maybe there might be a mention on the operation management of stormberms and stuff.
Sure.
So if you've got the guy coming in on a monthly basis, you know, if you've got your technician going in, he's gotta take a look at it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, please, 'cause we, it is being redesigned, I didn't get the feeling from anybody there that any great hew that we're...
Yeah, stormwater is not a big redesign, the stormwater is, we're trying to stick to what the original plan was for the stormwater. If anything, it'll be overkill and it's fine.
But if there's something along the lines of these berms need to be...
If we need additional stormberms or something.
It'd be appreciated, please, just put that on the plans.
Sure. Yeah, and I see what Mark has written on the backside.
Yeah.
Revised site plan.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, at this point, it's gonna be a construction record plan showing what's actually been built, that's fine. We can enumerate the field changes that were made and why, that's fine, too. We've already promised you...
All storms related to...
Yeah, we've already promised you revised stormwater report showing that the stormwater works on the site. Any revisions to the long-term pollution plan and the stormwater O&M we would make, I'm not sure there'll be changes to them, but...
We'll find out as we redo the stormwater.
Find out as we go along, yeah.
Yeah, we'll read, we understand that.
I mean, the bulk of the project, certainly the stormwater and the design, the arrays and everything were done according to plan, all of that is fine. If you've been out there to see the basins that are in the back, it's just pure sand. I mean, it's just a sandy site. Anything that gets in those is gonna just infiltrate immediately. You mentioned the debris off on the back behind the, that big depression in there had a bunch of stumps in it and some logs, those logs were pulled up to the edge, the stumps have been taken out. Those will be removed from the site along with some of the other stumps that are here and there along the site to clean it up. The big basin has been made, and the driveway itself, I think, was in, that was all pretty well in place.
The big basin is the one on the right-hand side?
The right-hand side, yeah.
The ball, what we call it, the ball.
And that's where you hit all the ledge and actually, that puts the road, yeah.
Yeah, and you see the contours in there looking regular, that's because they are, that's because it's all ledge. But that basin should serve perfectly well to, I mean, basically, it's taken a little bit of runoff from the road itself, and it's taken whatever comes out of the woods, which is not a whole lot, and then whatever lands on it, so it's...
And it has the structure in it, so in case it does fill up, the structure will take the top off and put it...
Put it on the other side, yeah.
Into the wetland area.
So we think that it's, it'll be fine the way it is and should function the way it was intended.
I was gonna ask, this is out of our purview, but do you need to go back, or do you need to go back to conservation, or what? I don't know what they asked.
Well, Heather's been out there on site and talking to Rohit on a pretty regular basis.
Meeting with her tomorrow.
And there's also a, we've got a conservation monitor, erosion control monitor person.
Yeah, I've been having a weekly erosion control monitor.
I've seen a bunch of those.
Yeah.
Okay, on a weekly basis.
So she's out there. I looked at the erosion control today, I mean, I think it's functioning perfectly well. I don't see any areas where there's a buildup of silt against the erosion control, and for the most part, it doesn't seem like anything's getting to them, which is fine.
And this is out of our purview, but we find we're working closer and closer and closer with conservation, so that's why I ask.
So, and Rohit's been in constant contact.
Get all the stuff you wanna ask, or, I'm sorry, board members? Have we covered everything we talked about, or is there more? I was not in the back.
Very, very much of it.
Okay.
So thank you. It's informative, I think, to hear this, but I think it'd be much more helpful to have the drawing, so we can do a comparison.
Sure.
And have definitive understanding of what was and what now is.
Yep.
So I guess, what's the, is there a timeframe for when a drawing would be available?
The drawing has to be preceded by the completion of construction, which they're trying very hard to get done in the next month.
You got a bunch of guys putting fencing in, in the hundred-plus heat?
They are, they're done. I know.
I gotta be, I drove by there and I saw the coolers, I'm like, these guys don't stop.
Yeah, they're going.
Fence is in.
Fence is done. So now, what happened is that you can't work on the driveway and have people shuttling in and out because they're all coming, if we're gonna shut off the driveway, then they have no access. So now most of that solar array component is completed, so now we'll focus again back on the driveway.
Okay.
And so the contractor is planning to be out there tomorrow, working through, you know, I'm gonna be out here game-planning with him to try to figure out what the timeline looks like. But we're, again, we're not trying to extend this for a long period of time here, so we're hoping to get you another set of drawings, we're targeting, let's just say, by the end of August.
And if I read the covenant, I reread the covenant a while ago correctly?
Yes.
You gotta get it done before we can turn it on.
I understand.
So I understand there's a certain amount of mediacy to it.
Yeah, no, and I mean, I understand that, you know, you can, we can have a conversation with the building inspector as well, he thinks, you know, so we'll have that conversation because he wants you guys to give him the green light to sign off on the, you know, the orders of certificate, and I told him that's fine, I mean, that's part of the purview of the planning board to give the green light.
Thank you. If I can just say in general, I'm not slapping any risks here, we got here, it seems to be okay. I wish we hadn't gotten as far along without this communication happening. There's a lot of reasons why it happened, we're not gonna, not gonna go through it now, okay? But I appreciate the, Cal and his team are out there. Appreciate you coming up, and I'm glad we were able to work it out, I know you've been traveling a lot. So look forward, I'm gonna ask for, I'm gonna ask for input, too, but I just wanna say...
Yeah, we appreciate it.
It's pretty angry people, and the other, and the other aspect is nothing to do with the planning, and I don't know nothing about it, is you also have neighbors that you have to keep out of.
Yes, and I wanna make sure...
I'm going to assume you're doing that, I can't get involved with that.
Yeah, so I'm just like, you know, is that we've been also trying to accommodate the abutters, you know, they do come across to our contractors and ask for something, so we'll show you some changes that are, after, you know, the big culvert maybe turned a little bit this way, well, we kept some trees that were supposed to be cut down, we decided, well, this abutter requested, if we can find a way to preserve it, my contractor said, okay, you know, a neighbor, somebody maybe...
I think your contractor has been accommodating?
Yes.
It's just, a lot of things were happening before anybody was really looking at it, and I know it was over the winter and hard to do, so it was just...
Yes. So, and then we have a really challenge, last year it was very wet, as everybody recalls, in the middle of, this year it's completely dry.
Supply was hard, and there was something weird going on in the world?
Well, COVID, yeah, so, just in general, I'm just telling you, it's a very different...
But I appreciate you.
Do we also need to include having some kind of communication, email or letter from rescue regarding Mr. Bulthwaite's conversation with the officers about the date and...
Can you please reach out to Fire Bob and ask him if he's the guy?
Yeah, I didn't know it was a fire card of the police department, but...
Regarding...
The changes and if they feel they're still, like, you were saying they did, but I...
We can request something from them.
Because we typically have that in writing, and if we're gonna go through these changes, I would like to hear, we don't do backside conversations.
I'll ask Kyle to document that.
We don't have side conversations in this.
Exactly. And I'd like to make a request, and I know you like the cover sheet, it's always so beautiful, but if you could find somewhere on the first cover sheet or something to list the changes in the plans?
Oh, in the plans, yeah.
Yeah, because, I'll be honest with you, I've been going upstairs and going through plans looking for changes, and in a 25-page set of plans, yes, it's about landscaping, but you could've put it on page, you could've put a paper up on page one.
Right.
Please don't bury it on page 29. This is my request. These are, you know, the callouts for the changes somewhere in the beginning of the plan has to be very helpful.
Yeah, oh, change box.
Other questions for the board?
I just wanna set some, if there's any changes or tie-in to the trail, there's a trail on the...
The rail trail?
The rail trail, and there's another trail that comes off the rail trail there.
That's actually the sewer main.
Yeah.
Yeah, the sewer main goes through the...
You're talking about behind the solar array?
Yeah, behind the array, between there and the residence, is there any, was there gonna be a continu...
So that was just like a natural, I think, trail coming along?
So there's two things, there's the sewer main that comes off and runs through the site, which we've planned for, and then there's also, right as the sewer main comes off, there's a trail that goes along the toe of slope, that's, we haven't touched that, that's been...
That's something that I thought was interrupted, it was gonna be restored.
It was interrupted where the road comes down, and it'll tie into the road or something.
Okay.
Yeah, but there's a storm basin right between the rail trail and that.
Yeah, that's where it ties in.
Yeah, if any, again, highlight, if there's any change to, from what was approved, but it's gonna be there, and then also, we talked when we were there about the restoration And then also, we talked earlier about the restoration areas, there's some areas that are gonna be restored.
They're well in restoration areas, yeah, those are yet to be constructed, yeah.
Any changes or...
No, we're not anticipating.
Okay.
Any other questions for the board or Mark? This one, I'd invite anybody who may have come from the general public to ask about air solar too. Boy, you guys got off lucky. No kisk works tonight.
Hopefully we haven't, I agree, there's too many people.
No more than you, Charlie. Excuse me.
All the abutters been really good to see.
Yeah, all I would recommend is that when you drop off the revised set of plans and the stormwater stuff, drop it off to DPW directly if you could.
Yeah.
Set here, set to DPW.
And we'll make sure we touch base with them and explain it, so they don't have to sort through it, we can walk them through it.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, Mike, if you could have a little internal meeting.
Which makes their lives easier if we can walk them through it.
Yeah.
Nothing else? Gentlemen, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
That was a discussion, right, now the hearing?
Yeah, yeah.
So close to the discussion.
Good form over.
Thank you very much, thanks for making the trip, Rohit.
Best good see you, gentlemen.
Good luck tomorrow with Heather.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, would you mind? Thank you.
What was it?
He was walking outside.
Okay, okay. Is that like really too heavy?
He kept looking at me through the window the whole time, so. It's funny, it's like, it doesn't look like it was going, it got done the way it was supposed to be done, and it was phased differently, but it seems to be not a bad change, I hate to say it, you know?
He's just hanging out up there, taking his time.
Okay.
Trying to read your lips. It's hard to read your lips with masks on.
We have a quorum, can we keep going?
You don't know where I've been. So, yeah, I tried to give away the chair job, it didn't work, did it?
No, I was wondering, since I thought Robert's rules was our Robert and he happens to be in the room. If it was a bigger board, would Nathan and I have to rock, paper, scissors, who does chair if like Jeff left? Like, what happens when you worked your way through the chair, the vice chair, and the clerk?
No, like, but the clerk's gonna walk.
Like, is there, is there, no, but that's what I'm saying, if it was a bigger board, then we'd have a board.
So you would send a member of the board and you just, someone, someone just volunteered?
Oh, come on, in that book, there's gotta be a rule.
And yes, and, and yes.
You're like the oldest white man, like...
They heard you tell, they heard you tell Julie.
No, I know, so it's you.
So, I, I'm actually going, I'm gonna, I'm gonna interrupt because I think I know the answer.
I figured you did, he bought me the book, but I didn't read it.
You do what is traditional in, what's traditional. So maybe flip a coin, you maybe pull an empty name out of a hat, and maybe rock, paper, scissors. But see, if, that's actually left open to the board, but you follow the last way we're done.
Okay, well, we'll have to look that up. Hello, sir.
Okay, are we live or are we...
We're, we're keeping it light.
We have an open...
Okay, yeah, we're checking.
We're still here.
We need to open the continued public meeting.
I'd like to move to continue the public hearing for Stratton Hill preliminary subdivision plan, thirty-five lots off of Wright Road.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Here and now, we'll put it to a vote.
Yes.
Hi.
I'm so pleased that you're all in the face.
Oh, excuse me. Okay, so, just as a matter of introduction, again, we're in the continuation of a preliminary subdivision plan with thirty-five lots with thirty-seven units off of Wright Road for Stratton Hill. So, the way we've been doing in the past, and we, I presume we'll continue to do it tonight, is we let Mr. Ashiboy start off, he's given us a summary, perhaps, again, the preliminary plan process. Then we'll have the board comment, we'll go to the applicants' representatives, and then we'll go to the public, as we've done in the past. So if you wanna give us any summary of where we stand and...
Uh, yes. What I see for this evening are three major items to discuss. First of all, are minor changes to the plan that the applicants described to us last time, I believe, pulling the road a little bit further to the west so as to impact the buffer zone to a lesser degree, but they will describe that. Number two is an update on the traffic consultant RFP process, I will provide that next. And third will be a brief update on the town council looking into the issue of waivers, that we will eventually have to take up, though I recommend that we do not take it up this evening until we have town council's recommendations on such. So, I envision tonight being sort of a relatively short progress meeting on, on the plan, with more action anticipated for the meeting on August ninth. At which point, I would hope we have a traffic consultant in hand, as well as some more information that will enable us to push this forward a little bit more.
I'd like to add one thing to Mark's comments, which I think should be the first. I believe the applicant owes us an extension, a letter of some sort.
I believe I already gave you one.
You do have one?
We have an extension until the end of August, though in the eventuality, it looks like we have to go beyond that.
No, that would not be an issue.
Is that a formal that we have in the file?
Yes, yes.
Clarifying that, okay.
We have a written, signed, letter granting until the end of August.
And you wanna clarify why we needed to get that under the, so everyone has that as a review?
Uh, yeah, because with the preliminary plan, I believe you have...
Thirty days, I'd think.
Forty-five.
It's thirty or forty-five.
Forty-five days, it's forty-five days, from the date of submission, which was June ninth, so...
Yeah.
Okay, so just as a matter of course, we're looking at tonight's meeting and maybe two more meetings in...
Two more meetings under the, the current extension.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything like that? You wanna go on with anything else in your summary?
Uh, no, no, I'm eager to see what they brought in. I didn't expect Stan to drop by my office today with a whole new plan set, but, uh, he did, and so I'm sure they have something to, to show us or...
So we do, we have some little tweaks that Stan will describe for you, and even though it was a...
I'd love to see it.
An entire new plan set, as you'll see. The changes are really tweaks, they're minimal, and hopefully you'll like them. It, it serves to move subdivision road a little further from the resource area in a couple of locations, and changes some aspect of the drainage further on up the road. So that having been said, I'll let Stan describe the changes for you.
So, after the last meeting, we discussed moving the road over the road, came down through here before, where those utilities are. I was able to move it over fairly significantly over to here with a double-barreled entrance. That enabled me to, that shortened the road where the intersection is by about eighty-five feet, so I'm now at about five hundred fifteen feet to that intersection, and then up...
Excuse me, Mr. Sheriff of M.A.?
Yes.
Um, in and out of my brain, oh, would you just roll back down please, I wanted to ask, roll back up, sorry. The dotted line to the right that shows the resource area, is that the hundred-foot buffer?
That's the hundred-foot buffer, I think, correct.
Thank you, okay. Just sure people won't look at this later, they can do apples to apples compare.
So, we've been able to pull all the pavement and all of the road outside of the hundred-foot buffer, and I was able to, oh, this is always getting...
I sit down, you were, I meant up, sorry, yeah.
So, and the other thing we did was, once you get past the intersection, I was able to pull the road further to the west, 'cause down at the bottom here, this grading went into the buffer zone, and I'll be able to pull that grading outside the buffer zone too. So it's really, and then this basin, which is outside the buffer zone, we're gonna look at making this longer and skinnier to just keep it a little further away from the, from the buffer zone. So at this point, the way we have this, at this point, we really have very minimal work. We have no work itself in the buffer zone, other than the restoration of, of this bottom area where the entrance is gonna be, and Ken, can you, I'm, sorry, I can't, Mark, can you pull up the other, that other thing that's on the disc, or do I need to do that?
Oh, yes.
I just did a little...
I'll make your, I'll make the...
I just did a little mock-up of what I, what I, what we're kinda thinking of for the entrance here. And this would be, this would be the double-barreled entrance with, with vegetation along the center strip, and this, this is the buffer zone, this is turned ninety degrees unfortunately, but this is kinda where the old road was, and we turned that into some kind of a walking path and restore this, and we could work with the Conservation Commission to see what kind of plantings they'd like in the buffer zone, and we could make this into a vegetative area or even a, a grass area, a park kind of area at the, at the bottom there, 'cause that area needs to be restored anyhow. And I, in my mind, after we talked last time, it makes more sense to maybe restore that closer to the wetlands, so we can work with the Concom and get them something that they, that they're gonna be happy with, rather than have the road there and do something on the other side.
And then the only other thing, the road location now is actually an area that was disturbed from the initial construction.
Right, this is, this is basically that left-hand entrance.
That's closer to where the trailer is sitting. That's closer to where the trailer is sitting.
That's where the trailer is, quite correct.
They had that double-barreled entrance, this is the left entrance as opposed to the right.
Just so people who drive by there now know where it is.
So those are the changes, in all other respects, it's the exact same plan.
So really, we're talking about two spots, the, the main entrance and then another location further...
Past the intersection.
What is that, like, just before the power line, something like that?
Yeah, yeah.
About halfway, I think.
Halfway up?
Yeah. It's, yeah, it's about halfway up. The road kinda went straight there, and I was able to put a curve in it and pull it over.
I think I can find that later.
Okay.
It's just, first of all...
Oh, it's, it's the next one over, yeah.
First of all, we don't need that anymore. It's my youth, yeah.
So, it was right in here, this, this kinda went more like that before, so I was able to pull it over.
Just as, this is just, it's more of a conservation question, but just a general question, you're gonna have to re-flag the entire place.
It's already been done, and it's already been, it's already been an ANR, an ANR done?
Yeah.
And the Concom issued an O-RAN on the property, so they hired a consultant to, to review the wetland flagging.
Right, that was, I kinda remember now that you mentioned it, back this time last year or so.
Yeah, right, about a year ago.
Okay, so, by relocating that entrance road, this again, just a technical question, doesn't change any kind of, we'll find this out in the traffic study, I'm presuming now that they'll have this plan, and they'll be looking at site distances and things along those lines.
Right, really...
You could give me the apprehension about the site distances, 'cause this kinda was where one of those roads were.
It is where one of the roads were, so I don't think it changes.
So before, we actually came up pretty, on this side of Standish Ave, now we're coming out on the other side, and this, this, I don't, this, this actually had better site distances than that.
Okay.
'Cause that, where it came up before was on a curve, now it's kinda on a straightaway.
So you're proposing, this, this looks like the double-barreled section is quite a bit longer than it was before.
Actually, I made, I made it all the way up to the intersection, I thought that would be prudent to have the double-barrel up to the intersection.
But the road itself is about eighty-five feet shorter to the intersection.
All right, I'll ask one more, two more questions, then I'll open it up for the board. The location of the retention basin at the front, that doesn't change at all?
No, that's existing, that's the one that's already there.
Right. Anyone else on the board have a question about the minor changes, the changes that we have proposed to see or seeing?
I actually have a question, but not for the proponent. Mark, do you have an electronic copy of this that you can put up onto the website?
Uh, yes, we haven't done that yet.
No, I did ask if it's done, I'm just saying, okay, good.
That we sent...
I know you dropped them off.
No, we sent an electronic copy.
'Cause we're trying to get as many people on, on top of this.
If you did give me an electronic copy, I just have yet to do it.
No worries.
But yes.
Can I ask, just, I'm sorry, I could ask Ken quietly. Um, the retention basin in the front, right, they were talking about, they're like, I thought you had mentioned earlier in our meetings that, is that finished and working? 'Cause as someone not in engineering, my kids consider it better ice skating than sandy pond, so I can't... Well, no, truly.
This is true.
It's, they call it Santa El Pond, if you wanna reclaim it.
It needs some maintenance and some upgrades.
Okay.
But it's there, but it needs, and the reason that it fills up with water now is that some of the drainage maintenance is further up, aren't built, so all the water comes off and goes in there.
Just from my own understanding, I wanted to make sure that was...
No, it needs to be, it needs to be maintained.
Okay.
And refurbished.
To get this winter in, okay.
So, just to review again for the public, we're, we're looking at this stage of the game at conceptual plans that are basically in the, you know, preliminary subdivision. When we get to the final, the drainage clearly will be relocated down the street.
Correct.
And the piping will change, and the underground utilities will change accordingly, so we all understand that. And you'll have to take a close look at that.
With, with one exception, Ken.
Might put it in easement or something?
Well, there are utilities that are actually in the ground right now, they'll stay there, where the old road was.
Some utilities will stay there.
Yeah, yeah.
But not drainage.
No, not drainage, but the, uh...
Water and sewer.
Water and sewer, yeah. Sewer will stay there.
Did we talk at all, Mark, or if you recall, under our subdivision regulations, we require street lighting? Did we talk about that at all?
We did talk about that.
We have talked about street lighting, we'd love your thoughts on it.
I think you guys...
Will do that in the definitive plan?
Um, well, we'd love a sense.
We talked about it at one of these preliminary meetings, that you got, you guys would like streetlights at whatever the integral in the zone is, I don't know that off the top of my head, because the DP, the electric light department can turn them up and down, so that they don't have, have a glare.
Okay, so, if you were to comply with our subdivision regulations, and I think you intend to do, that would include the street lighting, unless you would apply to a waiver for that, so I can get here.
Right.
So at this point, we can assume...
And we have pretty good standards for such.
And we have standards for the controls and so forth.
At this point, we weren't planning to ask for a waiver from that.
Okay.
Gee, if I could just comment on that one issue though, because the issue of streetlights kinda comes and goes. And one thing that's been very success, successful in other municipalities is to have the developer put in the infrastructure, and perhaps not all of the lights. So having the lights at the intersections and perhaps halving the number of lights and seeing how it is, rather than turn it into something that's heavily lit?
Yeah.
And would be more than amenable to doing that. At the Garotten side of this property, Dave Moulton actually excluded all of the streetlights, except for at the intersections. We did put in the infrastructure, so that the Garotten electric light could put them in if there was ever a want. But that development is actually basically built at this point, there are a handful of lots left, and it's, people have been living there for better than a dozen years at this point, and it actually has worked out quite well that it is not lit. So I commend you to think of that, if you would like us to do that, we're more than happy to do that.
And Mr. Sheriff, do you have a, two questions, if I may, two follow-ups. One is, which one in Garotten by street names, like, go take a look at it? Do you know without hand?
Uh, Robin Hill Road, so if you...
Got it, overdraws?
Behind Shaw's, yeah.
Yeah, I know, I know the Robin Hill, I've...
That's the other side of the site.
Um, the second thing is, did the town of Garotten and infrastructure goes in, someone's still gotta buy the poles and the lights, has, been any... I would like us to consider looking at how are the poles and lights gonna get paid for? And the reason I mention that is that's been a contentious issue here in Zaire, in here in Aire.
Streetlights are funny, yeah.
Okay, we didn't own them until recently.
Yeah.
They were all owned by, you know, we didn't own our poles or our lights.
That's interesting.
Since I've been here, they've been owned by the town, so it's a co-op wheel thing.
Yeah, we're very lucky, we have a municipal light department.
Yeah.
And you guys don't...
I grew up in a municipal light, so...
Yeah.
So I would actually, Mark, maybe make a note of that, is that some, uh, some condition being made. I know it's, in the whole game, it's not a lot of money.
Yeah, oh, no, we'd be fine with that.
It's a lot of money, a lot to...
We'd be fine with that.
Appreciate that, yep.
Okay, so we'll, we'll make sure we cover that when we get to the definitive plan, and of course, will be reviewed by the DPW.
Yeah, right.
Who kind of gives us assistance on security and other things. Could be a concern for security because of the remoteness, you know, in the back of the site.
And since we're still, I was gonna mention, since we're still drafting the engineering scope RFP, that might be a good question for a professional engineer, is how frequent of a distribution should the lights be? And, you know, we want, we wanna balance out the dark sky thing with the safety of these things.
Well, I'm gonna ask, if I may, Mr. Sheriff, is Garotten a dark sky community declared, do you know?
I don't really think so, although it's always, when I was on the planning board forty-five years ago, that was one of the biggest issues. We've always been a big proponent of no lights, well, dim lights.
Okay.
Thank you.
Certainly the true cutoff lighting is something that...
Mm-hmm, yeah. Lighting's come a long way.
We have a, you must have the standard by now, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Right.
But we'll do whatever you want, but again, I wanna commend you to consider perhaps just take the infrastructure, we'll set, give you money so that it could be put in later if the need be, and perhaps do minimal lighting.
So do you wanna move on to, you guys are good for the changes that you proposed?
I think so, yeah.
And, excuse me, may I ask one more question? I'm sorry, Mr. Sheriff. I know this is preliminary, and I also know the post office is trying to reduce the number of houses that they visit.
Yeah, I know, that's a thing.
Yeah, we had to do that on...
So I might, I might ask you to talk to the local postmaster and figure out, because that's gonna have some impact probably on the board.
Yeah, yeah, I will give them a call.
I hate to say it like that, but with thirty-five houses up there, you probably need three or four car pullout, blah, blah, blah. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, you said, yeah.
No, that, it's interesting, uh...
I've done a lot of stuff like this in the area.
Yeah, it's interesting that people aren't gonna have at-home delivery in new developments, but what are you gonna do?
It's really not that far away.
Yeah, well, that's true.
We're getting really used to doors, so...
But it's, it's what the post office is doing, and it's out of our control.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, it's, it's an economic.
And we've asked, we've asked each one of the proponents before us to come up with a solution, and they've talked to the post office and.
No, we've had to.
They're just, yeah, it's just, just trying to think through the details of doing it, because that's also gonna impact the neighborhood there too, depending on where it ends up.
Where it is, yeah, yeah.
If you can convince them to do it at the top.
Right.
Everyone's happy, because they can walk down to get their mail versus the extra six hundred feet.
Um, anyone else on the board have a question about this topic, which was basically minor changes? We kind of skewed to a few other thoughts before we move to the next.
Well, I mean, we're getting to fa, close to final, that's why I'm coming up. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Next on the board for Mark is gonna give us a summary of the traffic RFP that we, uh, put out, traffic study.
Ken, if I, if I may, just, I have a couple of things just to clarify on what we've talked about. Let's go back. The utilities that are gonna stay in the old roadway, and you showed Stan, uh, like a walking path.
Right.
Is your intent to, to have those coincide so that, that, because there's gonna be a deeded right-of-way method for the.
Well, this would be, this is part of the open space. This is all part of the open space, but yes, so we'd have to create an easement across that open space for the utilities that are gonna remain.
Right. Now, just, see, the, the walkway may create the visual that this is where the easement is. Is there any benefit to that?
Well, maybe, you know, actually, because in time you forget.
Yeah, I did sort of follow the old road there, so that would, we would, we could make that. And that way, if, if there was ever a need for someone to dig up the sewer for some reason or something, they wouldn't be digging up the vegetation. They could dig it, it would be in the path.
Right.
And, and, just, because if you ask, you have this call as, as asphalt. Stan, you gotta call up for, if I'm looking at the right place, at the right, the right walkway? The two-minute concrete sidewalk?
Oh, um, yeah, I hadn't gotten FI yet, but it would, it would probably be paved.
Okay, that's, just, I'm gonna put that on the table, we will think about it in the future.
Because on, the other thing that's happened, um, on paths like that that are on a, not super steep, but a, a grade, they, they wash out, it's not paved.
It also, yeah, when it's stone dust, as nice as it is when you install it, um, it's a maintenance issue for the DPW, um, less so if it's paved of some, some kind.
Can you remember where the trail entrance is?
Yeah, that's up.
It's further up.
Or the parking.
That's up.
I think it's.
That's up here?
Yeah, around thirty-five to thirty-four, just over.
And that was arbitrarily, I made that for four cars. And the path, unfortunately, is, is turned off on this, but it went through there, so. That, I made that for four cars, but I, as I thought about it, I didn't think there'd ever be that many people that would park up there.
Yeah.
And that's also the location of the current trails that run in that area.
Right, there'd be a connection to that, so.
So as we consider reducing lights, uh, and, I would bookmark that, uh, for, uh, for a special condition that we, so that we are sure to review it when, when, uh, the, uh, you know, when, if the design goes through, we get, uh.
You may want a light near.
Yeah, I would think that would be a good location.
Yeah, you have people exiting, um, near people's homes, you probably want a little lighting there, maybe something considering if there's any other, uh, right-of-way spots where the public would be coming and going around homes.
Mm-hmm.
Possible consideration. And I don't know if that is a good location. It would seem, it would, it would save some, uh, pavement for the mailbox, but.
The mailbox?
Yeah, I don't know if the people wanna go there.
Yeah, I don't think the post office would wanna go.
No.
Drop it off and everybody tells.
I'm just trying to keep.
I'm thinking something, maybe down near the intersection.
I think it's stock to the post office if I were.
But I'll get you money that wanna down near the intersection.
They're gonna want.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I, by intersection, I mean the intersection of the loop, rather than the intersection, right? So people, so put it off, so.
Yeah, get people off the.
Yeah, that's right.
That's all I got, Ken.
Do you have anything else?
No, good.
Jeff?
At this point, thank you.
Okay, so based on that, we talked about, you know, minor changes, and we've seen a new plan that's been submitted. That plan will go online and be available with the packet that's up on the, the website for, uh. I'm not sure if we have to put a note with that plan highlighting what those minor changes were, so the public is aware of the steps from Plan One to Plan Two. Um, that would be, I would have hoped that you could come up with something like that, Mark, just putting some notes there or whatever.
Yeah, I'll think of.
Think about how you can do it, I guess, so. So we'll move on to the next item that Mark brought up, which is gonna be.
I don't know that it's our responsibility to notate the changes.
Yes, I think it's a bit, it'll, okay, maybe not our responsibility.
Yeah, I think that puts a lot of the technology updates, like, we've, we're all available to answer the questions.
Yeah.
It's confusing.
Just my idea.
I'll see what I can do.
Sorry, I just see that being something, then we also always have to update people what changes, like, our job is to put the information on the information highway, not to also then explain it. I, I think that puts us in a position to do that a lot, but that's just my opinion, Mr. Chair.
You have to do it all the time.
It's a precedent.
I was gonna say, so, um, you weren't in the room for that, but we make the, we made a request for a, when the future plan set comes to us, for the issue you weren't in the room for, that they take the time to do the call-outs and changes on the cover sheet.
Right.
Because in fifteen years, when I have to read that again, I wanna, I wanna refresh my memory on digging in twenty pages.
So you're on the right track to what my idea was. I think we could ask the engineer to do the same thing on the cover sheet of this drawing here, just a couple of minor changes.
Yeah.
And just put a box on the cover sheet.
Yeah, that would be.
If you would go, go on.
I think that seems a lot more streamlined and a lot more, a better chance of that being accurate information each time, rather than, um, town members thinking we can do that for them every time.
I just want people to get the idea that we're just changing things arbitrarily without making it available for people to take a look at. So that's the thought there. Uh, so if we're in agreement with that, we'll, we'll generate some kind of a, a note location in the box on the cover sheet to.
I can do that, I can put that on the cover sheet, you just said, you're a new cover sheet, Mark.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so Mark, would you then give us a summary of the, the progress of the
Uh, yep.
Traffic study reviewer that's gonna work at the planning board?
Okay. Uh, I think I sent out five or six RFPs to various consulting firms that specialize in traffic peer review and traffic studies. Uh, several of, of the firms that I sent the RFP to indicated that due to their being busy, they weren't able to reply at all, which was a little bit disappointing, so then I had to add some others. So, so far, we have, well, last week, we received, uh, a proposal from NCH Engineering. And just today, I haven't read it yet, but I received another proposal from MDM Transportation Consultants. I'm hoping to receive a third, uh, proposal for T E P P LLC, which is also transportation. I think the T stands for transportation, I'm not sure what the E P P does. Uh, so I'm hoping that by either the end of this week or very early next week, we will have three proposals that we can compare. And, uh, I guess, I think the sooner we get this on board, the better. And so originally, I was thinking that perhaps we would, as, as a board, decide on this at the next meeting, but I'm thinking now that maybe we should do that sooner. Assume we get, you know, uh, all the proposals in hand by the end of this week or Monday or so, it might be good if, you know, maybe one, two planning board members could assist me in reviewing those and going through them, maybe making a few phone calls, so that when we come to the August ninth meeting, we have a recommendation and we can do that. Instead of going through them carefully. Does that make sense to them, yeah?
Yes. So the, the idea is that while we wait till the next meeting, we're gonna get the proposals by the end of this week. Uh, there's a potential that someone from the planning board could assist. Uh, who might be available.
Rob.
I think it's gonna be evident, I mean, I looked at the second proposal real quickly that you sent today.
Yeah.
It's gonna be evident, I think, that we're gonna find a candidate that's gonna come to the top of the three that we get. And then at that point in time, we just need to double-check that we agree that it complies with the scope that we sent out and the request that we sent out, which was very detailed.
Yes.
So I would ask that we also, I'm gonna be involved in this process, I'm gonna be doing the work, um, we also be able to report back to the bo, the board what steps we took
Yeah.
when we had the conversation, just so everybody's on the same page.
Right, yes, yes. And the whole intent here, I know, uh, the neighborhood has a very legitimate concern about the, the beach and pedestrians and.
Bicycles.
And bicycles and, and all of that, so, you know, getting an additional traffic count in the summertime, I think, is paramount for confirmation of that, so that's, that's the reason we would like to accelerate the process of hiring the consultant. Uh, given that it's only in the July, so, you know, uh, you know, hopefully by Friday, I can report back to the planning board that we have a third proposal in hand. And then early next week, I would recommend that we have just, you know, a little subgroup start reviewing them, uh, just like we've done a few other studies.
Now, the applicants, needless to say, have to take a look at what we decide on as well.
Yes, yes, everything will be open, but, you know, I think this little subgroup approach, I think, will accelerate the process, whereas if we wait till August just to start it, they won't be hitting the ground until mid-August, if, if not then.
Should we even need to just need to approve it next week? Like, if you, if you and Jeff had picked one?
Yeah.
We have to post a meeting by Thursday afternoon, you know, to get that done.
Well, yeah.
We have thoroughly planned.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Maybe you knew it by Tuesday, we could.
I think it's an legitimate idea.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just thinking logistics of it, guys, I'm not, I'm just.
So if, if potentially we had all the documents to us by Friday, we couldn't, we'd have to decide that we're gonna post it, probably not for a Tuesday, it might end up being a Wednesday.
Or Thursday.
Or Thursday.
Right, we, we could potentially do that.
We could avoid it.
I'm not saying we have to, I'm just making sure we think through.
No, no, we could.
If, if there's needing to be expedience with Zoom meetings being.
Possibility.
A possibility.
We could have to do it by Zoom, though, yeah.
That's, on the, the boards that I'm on that we do meet on Zoom, that's the beauty of it, because you're able to post it.
We could do it very quickly.
Meet for a ten, twenty, not that I'm gonna rush this, and it's a ten-minute meeting, please, everyone. I, I, I just mean if we needed it.
So we're, we're gonna leave that up to Mark to tell us the timing and if he has the proposals in hand. But based on that, we'll be able to decide if we can have a Zoom meeting or something.
More than likely, it looks like next meeting.
Since I know, I, I did get a confirmation from TEP that they will be sending us a proposal, so I would like to wait for their, but not too long.
Yeah.
So I will remind them tomorrow that we need it, you know, this week, Friday would be nice, and, uh, then we'll take it from there.
May as well tell them Thursday.
Yes.
All right.
Gee, could I, uh, say something? Uh, just as a point of information, uh, very well-respected firms, any of them would be fine. NCH actually has done the peer review on the Groton side of the site.
Oh, okay.
They're very familiar with, uh, this property, if you think about it.
Yeah, we had a good result with them for the Alltown.
Yeah, uh, very nice firm, but they do Grotons, all the Grotons peer reviews.
Oh, okay.
So they've worked on the Groton side of this property since two thousand two.
All right.
So maybe we should get together and tell them that they have misspellings in the same place in every proposal they've sent out?
I'll mention that.
Belcheck is funny if the word doesn't always pick it up.
But any of those firms would be fine. Just let us know when you need money.
I saw that. It's a kill me, kill you.
We're gonna pause for a second here, we're gonna ask the public if they have any thoughts on our process to get to the traffic peer review, which is basically what we're talking about, is we're hiring consultants to double-check the work of the applicant's consultant on the traffic study. We've added a scope to that, it's more intense, we think, than the applicant's, uh, studies perform. So does anyone wanna comment on the traffic study before we move to the next piece here?
I just have a quick question. Um, I don't know if it was in the original paperwork from last time, but are you looking at a weekend versus a weekday? Because on the weekend, that's when you're gonna get most of the summer traffic.
Oh, I, I think there's both. I mean, a good traffic study will study both weekday and weekend traffic.
And I can't, if I may, I can't quote it off the top of my head, but they, they submit a schedule, which is something we discussed with them, but the schedule for turning, turnings, which is what they're counting at, Sandy and Snake, Snake and Calvin, Snake and Wright, out of three, six, I don't remember off the top of my head, they have proposed times during what we would consider to be, um, morning and evening traffic times, midday times on the weekends, so they're proposing this, a series of times. And one of the things we do with them is, they say, you know, we have fifteen hours a week, we're gonna count turns. We work with them to figure out when those fifteen hours will be. We do, we, we should be looking at drive, drive time, but for pedestrians and cyclists and stuff like that, I mean, that corner there is the, if you look at the heat maps for any of the cycling applications in this part of the world, that intersection's the hottest intersection in this area for cycling and pedestrians. And that doesn't include the beach time. So the, if I may, long answer, but yeah, we're kind of laser-focused on that, too.
So I, I'll answer that question, too.
Sorry.
Long and short of it is that the proposal we sent out included the criteria that we needed to get them to, to comply with all the requests that we received from the neighborhood in the past, in, in, in a summary fashion. However, before we give that out, that job out, again, we'll be posting the result of that traffic study online with, I think the applicants is already on there, right, amongst the.
Yes, yeah, there it is.
So you'll be able to see the new proposal that we're awarding and compare it to the, the, uh, traffic study that was completed by the applicant, in hopes that it's more complete. And this traffic study will be analyzing the documents that were submitted by the applicant, that's part of it. It's not strictly a pure traffic study, it's a look at information that we've got already from the applicant's consultant. So there's a little more to it, a little more tricky. But we understand with, with certainty that this is one of the biggest topics that we have to discuss as a board. So we're gonna take whatever effort it has to do to get into that, into that subject. In addition to that, if they don't have the opportunity to do everything at exactly the time, I'll use the term they use, which is modeling, and we may not agree with modeling in some cases, but they, they do have information that they can add to, so for instance, when they get to COVID, if there's figures taken now, they'll have a COVID add, they'll add traffic to it automatically, they'll put another twenty percent on it, or eighteen percent, or some number that they've historically found out, is the difference between a normal commuter, a normal use of the street, and what was changed with COVID, so they'll put that, that, that number back in. So we're not trying to offset, look at changes that are thrown in at hours that represent a shortfall. They'll model it in if they have to, so if it's a July day and it should have so many cars, and they don't get it, they'll, they'll be hopefully adding more as an average and to get it to the, you know, the category that makes more sense to us. Anybody else on the board have a thought on the traffic?
There was a question in the audience.
Yes.
Are, just in talking to neighbors, um, I think, uh, confusion, are traffic studies, um, put with the wires across the road, like, are those considered part of a traffic study, like, you drive over them?
Oh, the traffic counters, the automated traffic counters.
Is that going to be taken into consideration?
Um, yeah, I, I believe that the applicant.
That's one component.
The applicant's firm that has put out traffic counters, uh, but we may, yeah, we'll see what they, what, what our consultant proposes. They may or may not want to do an additional one, but, you know, that's certainly, that's certainly a normal part of a traffic study.
Yeah.
If I may.
The traffic counts.
If I may. So the automated system of traffic counters do, does get used? I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, do you mind? But they also station people there. And they also have technology that takes pictures and videos, and they count from there. So depending on how they choose to do it and what the, you know, but it's not just how many cars pass point A is what we're looking at. Looking at what, what is currently going on, and what will the impact be on the neighborhood. They also go in and take a look at any information they have around accidents and stuff like that that happened in that area. Most communities aren't really good about collecting accident information, that's a problem, but they'll do the best. Thank you.
I also have a, do they look at the weather, too, because?
Yes. Hey, I'll let you know right now, a traffic study is usually ninety-four to one hundred and fifteen pages long, and it is exhausting to read, but worth every minute of your time.
Okay, so I think we got a pretty good explanation of what is in our requirements for the consultant that are working for us. Um, we've got some comments from the board, anyone else on the board before we move to the, you know, the audience, before we move to our next topic? Okay, so. Okay, so, we had a discussion earlier from Mark, and I'll let him finish it up, about talking to town council regarding requested waivers, or lack of requested waivers, either way. So, you want to go in there a little bit?
Yes. Part of our application package, when somebody submits a subdivision application, is to identify what they believe are all the requested waivers or modifications for the subdivision regulations or the zoning bylaw that they think they need to make the project work. There's one, one of those which they did not identify in their application, which was the maximum length of a dead-end road, which in our subdivision regulations is 650 feet. So, I'm checking with our town council, our town attorney, K.P. Law, to see if, you know, if they believe that is applicable to this case. And so, it might take a little while for them to get back to us, but that's something that we will be getting input on. So, before the end of the preliminary plan process, before the planning board closes out this phase of the subdivision review, the planning board should provide the applicant an indication of how, you know, what their thinking is on the waivers. The planning board cannot legally vote on the waivers until the definitive subdivision plan, which is a more detailed and generic intensive plan, which comes after this process. But, you know, it's only fair for the applicant, for them to know how the planning board, you know, is inclined to vote on these waivers. So, we want to get a full list of the waivers that are required and get legal advice as to which ones we need to make sure that we ask for.
Now, Mr. Collins and Mr. Dillis, you're aware of the four or five that were, are in play, right?
Yes.
No misunderstanding on what they're
Nope, that's right. You know, you know, it's interesting that you bring up the, the one that we didn't include, which we're happy to include. Would love to have a sense, you know, we can very easily add a road.
Can do that.
We can add a second access point, which I don't think improves the development any. But if that were a concern, would love to know, because we'll add a second access. Do you guys have a sense on?
We don't even know if we need a waiver for it yet. That's what Mark's
Yeah, but again, the question really goes beyond that, whether it's a waiver or not. If you would prefer a second access, we're happy to provide it.
So, I, may I, Mr. Chair?
I might. My recommendation is to wait and we'll hope and see if council gets back to us for it.
I think the thing that's important now is that we know exactly what the waivers are.
Yeah.
And that between now and the next meeting, we all sit down and think about how we're going to feel about those waivers. So, Mark can resolve exactly the four or five. I think one was striping the road, which is
Yeah.
You know, some of them are very
Yeah.
Concerned. I want, I'd like to request that the applicant double-check the subdivision regulations that we've put in place only in the last, you know, year or so.
Yep.
That there's nothing else in those subdivision regulations and now specifically on the OSRD regulations in play for them? Or do they apply before?
They apply.
Yeah.
So, to be even a better citizen, check the OSRD regulations. We don't apply, yet we put in place recently. Find out if there's anything in those regulations that you think you missed as part of the application. And then we'd have a specific list.
Sure.
And then, then I think it's a responsibility of the planning board, Mark can either make a recommendation or can't, or leave it up to us, that we know, I think we should do it before the last meeting.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
So, I was thinking we should plan for the next meeting to decide on how we feel on those waivers. And I guess it's a straw poll. Is that how we do it? Or do you just walk around, go around the table and discuss?
Yeah, because it's not truly a vote. It's just a, a sense.
Right, a sense. Because I was cautioned by town council, do not take a vote. There's binding. You cannot take a binding vote.
So, I would just ask the planning board members to be aware of that and be prepared to give their thoughts at the next meeting.
Yep.
For all the waivers or the one we were most vers-
I think we should
We were talking about
I think, I think three or four of them are pretty much no brainers.
Yeah, they're, they're in the application narrative. They, they identify.
Yeah.
But I guess I would say for the road question, we typically, as a board, go back to fire department and their leanings and their expertise as to their recommendations. So, I feel like, can we have a sense of that before we're sensing, sensing and
I think we could reach out to the fire department.
Yeah, that would make sense, yeah.
If we could have that, I'm sure that they have thought about that already at this point, so.
I think there's a number of things that have been thought about, not the least of which is what, that the previous subdivision was approved, you know? And we need to, I'd say, reach out to the fire department. That's something that you guys do at the weekly meetings or whatever.
Right, yes.
And double-check with them.
Yep, I'll do that when I'm reaching out to them, I'm about
Pretty sure they reviewed, I'll, I'll say this offhand, but if I'm not mistaken, they reviewed the prior subdivision
They did, no, I remember that.
That was submitted to us that was withdrawn.
Right.
And had, the only objection they had that time was those driveways in the back were very long. Those, those have been eliminated from the plan.
Yeah.
But it would be a, a good review to get their feeling and we can pass that feeling on.
I think that would be a more educated discussion than
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so
Yep, so August 9th is gearing up to be
Do you guys want to reach out to the fire department on your own, or do you expect?
I can do it.
Okay, Mark.
Because I have to contact them anyway about the other projects.
Okay, so we got Mark on board with that. So, we'll have a good list of waivers.
Yeah.
We'll have a handle by the next meeting as to any other departments that need some, some input. And we'll discuss individually how we feel about the waivers at the next meeting. Anybody have a problem with that, Nathan?
No.
Billy? Yeah, okay. So, we're moving on from that.
Yep.
Anything else from Mark on the waivers?
Well, that's, that's all I have right now.
Okay, I have a few things, if anyone.
Any questions from the public about waivers?
Okay, yeah, excuse me, I should have opened it up. Does anyone from the public have a question about how we work the waiver part of the project? I think Mark gave a pretty good explanation. Marion started.
Well, I, I, I do have a couple of questions, not about the project, I think, but I
Marion, you want to come up so we can hear you a little better? Please. I got a long list when she's finished.
Oh, thank you. So, so, Mr. Chairman, so I, I still hope that, that that the property will not be developed, that's why, by continuing hope and that we can find another arrangement that would be suitable to the, to the owner and to the town. But I, I was disappointed that, that there's no discussion about the the roads not being developed above the power line. I hope if this project does go forward, that, that, that the road will not go above the power line. And I do have a question about the, about streetlights and just questioning the, the need for, for streetlights. And, and I think that they are very environmentally damaging. And so, I think that, that I hope that that you'll take that into consideration.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Dodd is making the point again that she hopes that the developer will somehow come up with a way to not build the property. So, I'll just emphasize that that continues to be her thought. Okay, so I've got a few things, and what I tried to do next here is, is to summarize some of the things we talked about before and just make sure that we're all working, it's all working in the same direction, if you don't mind, okay? So, the first thing I had was the waivers, so that's done. I'm checking that out. We talked at the last meeting, and I think you submitted a yield plan. Are we good? The yield plan is no issue?
Yeah, what decorate, the furniture is accurate, the areas are accurate, yes.
Okay, so the yield plan, we agree, is behind us. Okay, so that goes off. I just want to clarify that, I know it's been mentioned, but I want to clarify it again, that the proposed earthwork, site work, however we want to talk, disruption, continued construction, is all within an area that was previously cleared in the original subdivision.
That's correct.
So, in essence, we're not going to go outside of any of the areas, except in the case where we actually talked about retention ponds. We may have a new retention pond, potentially.
But within the previous disturbed area.
It's all in the previous disturbed areas.
Gee, and on that subject, Ken, I did confirm with my client, no material would be leaving the site. I know that was a question last time. He would use everything on site. He would
Okay.
Repurpose whatever material is dislodged.
That actually brings me to a good question. I don't know if we talked about this. Did we anticipate in the, in the thought process of the traffic review, the construction traffic?
That, that's in the
That's in the scope, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm saying that just because I can't, I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, that was, that was
So, it's in the RFP. So, we'll be, we will be looking fiddishly at that. The CMP, the follow-up that's required for the conservation management permit.
Yes.
So-called CMP, and the work with natural heritage on an amendment.
That's correct.
Any more on that in the last two weeks?
No, so, again, what my anticipation is, is after the board acts on the preliminary, we will do a, the, the amendment, the CMP
Right.
And the notice of change of project on the BEPA approval.
Okay, you can answer that, but I'm just following
I don't want to do it until we know we have something that they can review. I'm glad I didn't do it last year, because again, I'd be doing it again.
Right. So, that's just for the information of the board, for the simple follow-up. So, it's kind of important that we get behind us, our decision on the preliminary plan, so that other steps can follow along. Again, the consent agreement with New England Power National Grid.
And again, same deal, yeah.
Okay.
Although, I'm not hearing anything that would lead me to conclude that the roadway in the location of the power lines is likely to change. So, I may well initiate that process soon rather than waiting.
And my recommendation is to do it immediately.
Yeah, yeah. And with AT&amp;T, given that I'm probably never going to get a response, I probably will send something out about that easement that we believe is superfluous, but
Okay, so you're talking about something different than this two.
Yeah, there's two, yeah. But yeah, I'll start that process.
Because we really want to know, you're going to end up with a draft that's going to have to be approved. You're going to end up with a number of steps based on their template requirements. I'd like to reach out to Ann Gagnon just one more time, if I could, from the board, just to double-check the conservation restriction and how it applies to Article 97 regarding the land, the open space land. You could just review that one more time for me and for the board.
But it won't be a C.I., it's going to be an V.
I understand. That's why I want to clarify. Just double-check it.
So, it's my understanding that the developer is proposing to deed the open space to the Department of Fish and Game in Fee, and that is considered Article 97 land?
Okay.
And it's my understanding that once Fish and Game acquires land, we've never given it up. So, it's permanently protected as conservation land. And there have been a number of other towns in the area, including Dunstable
Shirley, maybe? No?
I can't remember. Towns and have all allowed open space in OSRD to come to the Department of Fish and Game in Fee.
And I think there's one in Groton, which would, I think, I think all the by the river.
Yeah, that might have been before
That's your block.
Yeah, I think there is.
That might have been before my time. But I personally have dealt with, you know, Dunstable towns and, and I think at least one of those towns has Coleman and Page as town council as well. And as long as the developer and the planning board both voluntarily, you know, agree that, that this is to the benefit of the town, then that's a wow.
So, just from my own information, this, we have, there's a number of steps in the conservation restriction. For instance, the lodge plan delineates the perimeter. Is that the same requirement, basically, for drawings and things along those lines?
Yes, yeah. So, there'd be, there'd be bounds for
Right, all the bound, okay.
Yep.
So, all that's basically the same.
Correct.
But this, because it goes from an owner right to, the fee goes to under Rattleman at the St. Hanukkah 7, which is new to me. I've seen it, but I didn't know what exactly it was. It, it overcomes the requirement for a legal document called a conservation restriction.
Correct, yeah.
It's a higher level, yeah.
Okay, so I'm just, and no one has a problem with me going through that right again one more time, just to double-check it. So, that's what I'm doing.
Gee, can I say one other thing as an informational thing?
Of course.
So, sometimes you'll see
Of course.
Sometimes you'll see
It's made by the words, so let it pass.
Sometimes you'll actually still see a C.I. on the other side of the site. Mass Audubon has the fee.
Okay.
We did a conservation restriction that is held by the town to make certain that it would never be converted to anything else. And occasionally, you'll see a C.I. in favor of somebody like Fish and Wildlife.
But I interrupted for a second.
I don't want to listen to that for the simple reason that we're talking about Article 97 land, which changes the entire
Well, no, but that's Article 97 land, too.
It is.
Yeah, yeah.
Attorney, Attorney Collins, I don't want to confuse folks
Yeah.
by bringing that up. And the reason I say that is because if, if the Department of Fish and Game owns the land in Fee, then it is considered Article 97.
It is.
Mass Audubon just holding the land, it's not considered
I didn't think so.
Article 97, because they could, in theory, you know, 10 years from now, decide to sell it to purchase another property, whatever.
Which is again, why we look at the
Conservation restriction over it, it's not. So, that, that's kind of a separate
And when it becomes Article 97, it goes under a whole set of state statutes which require the legislator to vote or something at a very high level. So, it's in essence protected forever.
That's right.
Mr. Chair, maybe through you and Mr. Collins, maybe, or Ms. Gagnon can answer this question. We're talking about putting land in conservation perpetuity, which is a fantastic thing.
Under the control of mass wildlife.
Mass wildlife or Audubon. What is the mechanism to make sure that that property then becomes always open for use to the public?
Article 97.
Just curious.
Article 97. So, again, when land is owned by the Commonwealth or any of its political subsidiaries, including a municipality, for conservation purposes, it falls within the confines of Article 97. So, again, it is
Can use be restricted under 97, or is it just open use?
No, it can be. It can be. But the deed, and, you know, I'll give you a draft of the deed ahead of time, but the deed will actually spell out that this is for the benefit of the general public in perpetuity.
Well, I understand that. It just occurs to me, Audubon, Audubon sells the land.
Okay, hold on, Jeff. So, hold on, Mr. Collins.
Yeah.
There might be a disagreement here, and I'm going to let Ms. Gagnon go for it.
Yeah, I was just going to add that our land that's owned by the Mass Department of Fish and Game is always open to the public.
Okay.
There may be, and the only caveat is that we may sometimes temporarily close a certain section because there's, you know, a nesting goshawk that's going after people that are walking down the path, you know? It, it's more of a safety issue. Or if there was, I don't know, a rare species nesting right in the middle of the trail, we might close a section of the trail temporarily. But it's my understanding that we don't typically close our property in general, ever.
Mr. Rush.
So, does Article 97 preclude logging?
No.
No, doesn't preclude.
Oh, so if we want to preclude logging, we would have to ask for that or put it in there. Because I was thinking of state forests. You know, I go in state forests and you see, you know, they're logging, you know, 20 acres of, 200 acres of state forest. And it's like, okay, and you know.
Not necessarily a bad thing.
Oh, I know. It's not necessarily a bad thing. It depends. It depends.
It's management.
I don't want to get us way off
Yeah.
Oh, I know, I know. But we'll, we'll have to look at all of these things when we
I think the thing that I was trying to get I think the thing that I was trying to get across tonight, and maybe we shouldn't have gone down this trail, is that Article 97 is a little different than what we had in our written regulations.
That's correct.
Which calls for a CR, yep.
So that opens up another way to do things in a very positive way, it looks like, so that's good.
That might be a question eventually for the attorney to find out how we have to handle that, given our regulations.
Right.
Right.
We just got to what we require, CRs.
Yeah, no, that's right.
Right away, you don't have to require one.
And that may, well, that may have to be a waiver. Yeah, it may have to be a waiver, but if indeed it is superior or just as good as a CR, I don't see why not, but we may want to put further restrictions like logging if we think that's an issue, but we'll get there, we'll pick it up later.
Okay, so I've got another thought about the conservation land, and I have Ian, Ms. Gagnon here, and you guys can comment about my thought. It's, the Town of Ayr owns a large parcel and is a direct of butter to your east of the property. So in essence, the open space, if you, I don't know if you want to put it back up, we call it the lots to the right, the open space, and there's a lawn pond and a trail over there, the dam and all that under the Town of Ayr. Would it be a benefit for us as a board to think about the land that's south of the power lines becoming the Town of Ayr Conservation Commission? And the land north of the power lines, which tends to be the biggest open area for Fish and Wildlife? That's my thought. I don't know if anyone has an idea about that, or it's brand new, but we can think about it later.
If I could just say one thing that we would probably want to do, if you were so inclined, and it's fine, we would gift the land, but we would probably then do a conservation restriction on it that Fish and Wildlife, we would ask Fish and Wildlife to hold so that the town could never commit it to another use. We actually, I personally seen lands that was gifted to municipalities than being looked at for school sites, so we'd want to make certain that that would never happen.
Athletic field, school sites.
Yeah, so we'd want to make certain that would never happen.
But this question comes up in regards, if we were interested in putting a park near the front of the entrance, or something along those lines.
That's right.
It may have to be, in fact, if the park is under the control of DPW or somebody else.
Yeah.
That's a good point, yeah. I'm just waiting for our parks department.
Or parks department, whatever it might be.
So we might want to separate it out a little.
Yeah, it's this piece of land right here.
It just seems to me that the area that's to the south is less impactful to Fish and Wildlife because nobody's going to, you know, I'm not sure, just a thought, we can talk about it later.
Yeah, and you know, it might be a nice thing, and again, perhaps after a decision on the conceptual, is to have a meeting devoted just to this one issue.
Absolutely.
Would be happy to do that.
Okay, lastly, I've got two more things. One of them's kind of important. We know the impact of blasting is important, we're going to keep reviewing that as we go along through the process. We have a situation where we have a request, I believe, for two lots that are going to be affordable housing.
That's correct.
So, am I correct in those, we're talking about four affordable housing units, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Two family units, I believe, may need a special permit. We have issued special permits for two families in other developments, I believe, the Aho development. So in your application, I don't think you requested any special permits.
We didn't, I was leaving that for the definitive stage.
Okay, so, just for Mark's use and follow-up on that. So double-check that we need, if there's any other special permits that we need regarding the final definitive.
This is coming to us under OSRD, correct?
Comes under OSRD. This is the language that I've taught, brought up before.
But I just want to make sure, under OSRD, we are the granting authority for a waiver for two families. It doesn't have to go to ZVA.
That's the best of my knowledge, that's the answer.
So, I'm just putting the discussion on the table, guys.
That's why I'm bringing it up.
I understand that.
So, under the OSRD, Section 10.16, I think it is, we allow all housing types within an OSRD. Those housing types, however, may need special permit beyond the single-family use, depending on the zone that they landed.
Yeah.
And we discussed this before, we did, we granted, I think, six duplexes at a recent development. And to the best of my knowledge, those were granted by the planning board.
Exactly, yeah.
That's all I have to say about it, because the rest will get me in trouble. So anyway, that's what I have, I believe the other thing we need was a site plan review, but you do have that for clearing and other things. That's the list I have, so if anyone else on the planning board has any other thoughts in general, and then I'll go back to the public one more time, about other questions or things we need to put on a list to think about before we get to the ultimate vote a month from now. Could you, anyone have anything? Jeff?
Nothing else, thank you.
Mark?
I want somebody to have something more than that, but I got nothing.
We're the MVP, so you're the C.
One more time to the general public, any more questions for tonight's meeting that you have or any concerns? The applicant? Okay, so having heard the discussion and having, I think it's time for us to vote for a continuance.
I'd like to move.
I'll make the motion, excuse me.
Oh, you're going to move?
No, you have to make the motion.
I'd like to move to continue the public meeting. Stratton Hill Prelude Subdivision, 35 lots off of Wright Road, to the next scheduled air planning board meeting.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote.
Yes.
Aye. Aye, the chairman says aye, it's unanimous.
Thank you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item on our agenda tonight is the Town Planner Update, which talks about development project updates and other items.
Yep, okay, I was able to reach Mr. Joe Cataldo, and I did mention to him that we did want to see his, we wanted to see his site at 66 Westford Road, and based on my original conversation with him, we would have been having a site visit this Thursday, but he couldn't do that, so I am now trying for next Thursday. And he has yet to get back to me, but if we do have the ability to meet next Thursday out there, would people be able to do that?
I have a comment on that, didn't he send us an email back and said he couldn't do Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday? He could only do Wednesday, Friday. He's got jury gringe, he's on the grand jury. He's been on the grand jury for like 10 weeks.
I had to help with Thursday, Friday, and December.
Yeah, grand jury is at least two weeks.
Many weeks.
All right, well.
All right, so you're working on it.
I'm working on it, and I'll try to.
And this could not possibly be a busy time of year for a landscaper, huh?
Yeah, right.
In a drought.
I'll try to dovetail that with the school construction considering that. So that's the main thing. Charlie indicated that all the subdivisions are going well, though I don't have exact numbers of how many COs are left, but he informed me that things are going according to plan.
That's nice. Any comment on the project on Central?
The only comment I had is I got a complaint email from Hab Trucking that people doing the construction work were parking where they shouldn't have been in front of the building, so hopefully that's been taken care of. Because I noticed there was one or two days when there were all these subcontractors all over the site trying to get something done, so that was probably what prompted that.
Mr. Tillson.
I'm going to make an observation, and I do not want to get in trouble for saying this, I should probably keep my mouth shut, but there are times when the parking seems to be okay across the way at Nishoba Trucking, and there are times when it's not okay. And I don't know, I actually thought they had made an arrangement, because I saw so many cars and trucks there. So, yeah, maybe it's a quick conversation with the opponent to make sure.
Yeah.
Thanks, I just thought that had been ironed out, honestly.
It had been, because I had spoken with him, and they had had a plan of how they were going to, he was either, because it was Heather's idea, actually, so if the cones weren't working, she would, he was going to spray spots for the people coming.
Oh.
And that way she'd have spot, or sorry, spots for her, so that way the people coming wouldn't park there. He said if we had ran into this again, he would be open to doing that. But there were supposed to be cones and a lot of conversation, and he was.
All right, the office people's parking, very specific area, it's a huge building, the office is in one corner, unfortunately, right connected to the property across the street. That's where you park, and he show up. I think that's the issue, so, okay.
Okay, we hope that's going to resolve itself, and that something progress, progress is happening over there. Any further?
That, yeah, that's, the main thing that I have for this evening is trying to set up the site visits. So I will be in touch.
The 40B application went in, as we all know, for Pittsburgh Road.
Yep.
I think in general, the work with Mark, they may have decided to reach out for us, to us, for comments.
They will be, in fact, yeah, Carly is organizing all that, we have a little subcommittee, she formed a little subgroup, we're meeting on Friday. The first thing that we are tasked with is coming up, similar to what we did with the subdivision, coming up with RFP scopes for traffic for the 40B engineering and all these different things. And we're going to compile those hopefully into one gigantic RFP. So I've been tasked with the traffic part of that. But it's an ongoing process, and yeah, the first meeting was last Wednesday, and it seemed to go well.
Anybody else have anything else, Mark?
Regarding the 40B.
Any other questions, Mark?
I was going to say, Mr. Chair, and maybe not this meeting, but the next meeting, I'm happy to report back from the Affordable Housing Trust being designated from the planning board to be Affordable Housing Trust right now, on what's going on with that, too.
Thanks, thank you.
Next meeting? Okay.
Sure.
Good, thanks.
The other thing that's just of interest is that CPC, it's got an application for quite a lot of money. Have you heard about that? It's going to be on a future CPC meeting that.
For NOAA.
That NOAA is, the applicant for the 40B is going to ask for assistance from the town.
We're going to the magical district, okay.
So we may want to think about whether we, as individuals, support that request or not, when it comes into the public view or not.
What I will do for our next planning board meeting is I'll put together a quick presentation on where the 40B is at the Affordable Housing Trust, because that should happen, and we'll include that information.
So the Affordable Housing Trust and the Affordable Housing Committee will probably separately be endorsing, undoubtedly be endorsing the project, just FYI. And we'll leave that to, there's only Board of Appeals and others at that point, so. Anything else from Mr. Raschen?
No, I'm all set for the evening.
Okay, so next on the agenda is the meeting minutes, which I think we have to wait on because we know we have an understaffed group at the moment, and so we will wait to approve the minutes.
It's not allowed.
So we have minutes of June 28th and minutes of July 12th, and then we'll subsequently have minutes for tonight. So the next time, we'll have probably three minutes to sign off.
We should schedule a four-hour meeting next time?
Minimum. So now we're moving on to administrative announcements, so that would be either old business or new business. Any old business from any members of the board?
I have a question, I think this is a good place to ask it. It's not old business, but for my own point of learning, and I want to stay high-level and brief, so we're not going to go nerd out on this, but when we're doing this, looking back on how things were, like looking at plans from prior projects, or going on site walks to see how things are going, we've now had a few conversations where we went, oh, the plan just changed, and it had me kind of wondering at some point, like, so what's the point? Like, this is where I talk to my kids and say, well, we had a plan and they just did something different, well, is there a consequence, or is it a point of discussion just to keep us, like, is there a line? Like literal line, right, like which lines are the ones where you can't break those lines, and which lines on these paper can you, and?
Take it from me first.
Yes.
Okay, so.
This has now been a few times, like this has now been a few different times, and that's what we're doing, right? We're going back to hear or see how things went, but I still feel like I'm left with the question of, so, what's the point?
I think the question is very valid, and should be taken very seriously by everybody that's a member of the planning board, or any other board that approves a project.
Right.
The, I can only tell you in my own experience that the language of some of the previously approved projects was not strong enough.
Yeah.
So typically, on a project of the scope that we're seeing, you would have some language in there that the engineer would be on to a monthly report. It could be a bi-monthly report or a quarterly report, some language that the engineer would have to report back.
Yeah.
In addition to that, there would always, should always be a requirement that before the planning board signs off, they receive as-built drawings. The as-built drawings verify that the product, the information, the stuff that was installed in the field stuff.
Right.
Roads, drainage, water, sewer, electric, or whatever it might be, was installed according to plan.
Right.
Or we're given a new plan that shows the change.
Right.
So there is a difference in the way we approve things in its scope, and if it's a subdivision, we have much tighter regulations in subdivision roads than we do in site work.
Yeah.
So site work tends to be not as tight in the regulation as our subdivision regulations.
Right.
And for a number of different reasons. Typically, site plan review is not as strict an approval as a subdivision approval. So there's somewhat less of a overriding law that controls site plan review. However, we as a board have the ability to put any kind of language in there, and specifically, we should be concentrating on putting better language in our decisions. And I think we are, I think the last few decisions that we've done have better language.
Right.
And the rest would be me just talking politically, which probably is not the right thing to do.
So with, if I can give an example, and if I can't give an example, please stop me, Mark, but when we talked about the, Calvin was here, and we talked about the barrier, right? The guardrail, thank you, I know it wasn't a wall. The guardrail, it allowed us to have a discussion based on also having residents here to say, no, we really wanted what was built, and you didn't build it. So is that where the line is, is like, if people care?
I'm going, may I?
No, that's not the line at all, the line is right here, right here, right on this board.
Yeah, but I don't always, I don't know that I see that.
If I may?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Mr. Tillson.
Is this okay to have this discussion?
This is awesome, this is really good to have. So using the example of Riley, of Riley Glen, and the guardrail.
Yeah.
Okay. The line is very clear.
Right.
Okay, they, throughout the process, they have to get lots of permits, there's a lot of, there's a lot of interaction between building a group of homes on a road.
Right.
Okay, so that line becomes very easy, and it's very easy for us as a board to say, it needs to be black and white, the way it is on the page.
Right, and it's also a subdivision.
Subdivision that has utilities that are connected to town infrastructure.
Exactly. We get to a little less of an exact world when we're looking at something like the project on Washington Street.
Yeah.
There's nobody watching, I hate to say it, but it's a lot of work in the woods.
Yeah.
And not a lot of people watching all the time.
Okay.
We can phase it as best we can, there are exigent circumstances.
Yeah.
You know, and I'm not going to get into the details. It went way too long before we had that conversation again. I chastised them nicely because there's not much we can do. We can't send the planning board police and say, shut it down.
Okay.
And the way that the language was not strong enough to shut them down along the way.
Because in a hypothetical situation, let's take it away from that, because let me just talk, if we're at some other site, and they made choices to not build another thing that would have been a safety feature that's on them and their crew.
We have a building inspector who will, if he doesn't see it, or it's not built to the expectation that the building inspector has, it doesn't get permitted.
Okay.
Okay, now, things will happen, building codes change over time.
Right.
There are things that you can't see that will happen.
Yeah.
They're expected to come back and revise the plan.
But we haven't really seen that, unless we've gone and asked for it.
We haven't had a situation like the one that was presented when I was out of the room.
Yes.
So the long and the short of it is that.
But it reminds me of the guardrail, and it reminds me of, I mean, it gives me pause as we look at more plans going forward to say, why have I been sitting here on all of the other ones?
Well, I think what we have to, in my particular case, I'm looking at the big picture.
Yeah.
Okay, and the big picture is the all-town station.
Yeah.
Perfect, right by the drawings.
Right.
The big picture is, you know, going to be other projects like that. We're going to see other subdivisions that are going to be finished like that, they're going to be done right.
Yeah. Yeah.
So the, the long and the short of it is that during, during the process, as Jeff pointed out, subdivision roads have to be done to a certain extent and approved by DPW before they can get the first billing permit.
Right, right.
So there's a step there that's required.
Yeah.
They have to come to us for the bonds, interestingly enough, we have these, this work going, it's being fully funded by the, uh, and just done, no bonds. That's even a better deal.
Yeah.
They're, they're paying for it themselves, Aho never wanted it, he just did it.
Oh, oh, right.
Okay? He didn't, he didn't wait for us to get a, ask, go back and release bonds so we could put homes in.
Yeah.
Same thing with the gentleman over there, so they're, these are legitimate
He's giving us a pile of cash and said, I'll do it.
people that are building that stuff.
Yeah.
And you'll see the result when they're done.
Yeah.
The site plan review process is weaker, I think that's part of, part of the issue.
All right.
But I firmly believe that everything that comes, let's put it this way, I don't spend hundreds of hours looking at this stuff to think that they're gonna not do it according to the plans.
Absolutely.
I believe they're gonna do it according to the plans.
Right.
Um, so yes, we do need to put another step in there potentially earlier in the process.
All right.
And, you know, I was in a butter, so I couldn't open my mouth anymore.
No, I understand.
So it's different, uh, depending on what the process is, but
Yeah.
And the other thing we have to keep in mind is that we are only part of the process.
Right.
There are other boards involved, so conservation has their rules and regulations and they have strict state laws and things like that, so we should feel comfortable that most of the projects that are being done are being done according to what-
I think it was just a, an interesting series of-
The short answer is expected to be done to plan.
Right.
That is not, that is not, and that would be just expectation in any way.
Right, and again, I think it's just the series of meetings we've just had, so that helps.
And good luck just explaining for the kids.
I think the other thing, the other thing that's important that we wanna-
Bring Nathan's kids in.
The thing that's, one of the things that's really important that we do is to, we ask DPW and outside consultants to approve these things.
Right.
So, you know, we're spending consultant time, we're doing all this stuff, but more importantly, I think as a board, one thing we should always keep in mind, as, as the public is very involved, is stormwater, we just cannot let that go. Um, you know, that's really critical in this day and age, especially in that town, so.
Yeah.
Those are, those are my thoughts, if anyone else has thoughts.
Yeah, only thing I would add is certainly where there's a critical health and safety issue, then you gotta get right on it. If there's a violation of these dangerous conditions.
Right.
Whether it be traffic or stormwater, I think the problem is this.
But we would hope that we would see it or one of these agencies would interact.
Right, where somebody were to learn this to a, a butter or to alert us to it or something.
Yeah.
Right.
Good.
Yep.
But there's no question that every single line on those plans is drawn by a professional engineer.
Right.
Stamped.
Some more professional than those.
And therefore you just do it, you know, it's supposed to be done right.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I would, I would just make one comment, which is that, you hear it, you hear it in, means I've said it, that I wanna see more downtown development. Right? Uh, not these, not these subdivisions out of the edges of town, but downtown. Uh, and I think that as a planning board and other boards, we should, um, be aware, uh, that uh, there is a balance to strike in regulation so that, uh, it is, it is attractive, uh, is beneficial to all parties to draw in these downtown developers, right? Uh, I don't, I don't know the reasoning behind why, why this one, Pittsburgh Road is going to forty B so much, but, you know, I I would want to be, uh, I would want to encourage, um, downtown development where
Yeah.
where it is going to be, uh, uh, long-term helpful to the economy of, of air. And so, you know, it's, yeah, as we add special condition, add special condition, um, and, and go through long, from a means and ask for extensions, those are costs. And, and costs to us as volunteers.
Heck, yeah.
Costs to, to developers, to our staff, and I just, there's, 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 there's a balance that, that we will all work on.
As far as the downtown is concerned and the form-based code, there are some
There is interest.
There are people, yeah, there's activity out there, it just hasn't arisen to the level of an application yet.
Yeah, that'd be exciting to see.
Soon, soonish, we will see something under the form-based code.
Excellent.
I'm not sure which one will get here first, but, but there are, you know, various people out there working on things, so.
Nice.
Yeah.
He's gonna rue the day he said that.
I think the important point that Julie brings up is that in the future, as a board, we need to write tighter decisions and we need to have more supervision. Cause if we do get one of these other projects in downtown, that's even gonna be more critical.
Right.
Cause you're gonna have huge traffic issues, you're gonna have all kinds of temporary conditions, you're gonna have moving people up, you know, there's gonna be disruptions.
Yes.
So we're gonna have to have a click-cut, uh, stuff, you know, going on.
Yeah, and, and that helps because then the developer knows their costs, the All-Town examples, is they do start to finish.
Right.
But what, what the total nugget was going to be. So I think that having those special conditions, those restrictions can be helpful, but they, they, they can also be a harm. So we just need to-
Yeah, very, very good discussions.
If I may, you mentioned All-Town, the McDonald's renovation?
Right.
Yeah.
Right by the numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They, they were on time, ahead of schedule, got it done just like they said.
I've never enjoyed getting McDonald's so much, as to which.
But seriously-
No, really, I mean it, I'm like, oh, look, I'm doing some work while I get my children some food.
So when we work with people who do this, you know, there, there will be smaller developers who will end up, they're, they're more affected by changes in the economy. All-Town's a large corporation.
That's fancy.
What's going on over here at Chop and Save, they just started working in the ground over there. I have an expectation that's gonna go by the numbers.
Exactly.
Thank you.
You know, yeah, I really do, and we gotta lock them on and actually, I've heard zero problems with the other OSRDs going on in town right now. They've gotten them done and they're moving forward as quick as they can, so.
And the other thing that, you know, we owe it to ourselves and we owe it to the applicants to do site visits.
Yes.
More site visits.
Yeah.
They, if they see us out there and they walk, see us walking around, then there's no, they probably know this is accountability.
Yeah.
You know, as simple as that.
And the site visit we were on a few, a while back on one of the projects, us being there was actually beneficial to the develop, to the proponent.
Yeah.
He had a difficult, he was having difficulties with some owners. And they're like, wait a minute, what are you guys doing here? Well, we're making sure it's built to plan.
Yeah.